How do you say? Um. What I can say there was. Yeah. And they're there.
It's a lot of the way. So in here. First off. Here's a. And. So now. Back to how maybe I should.
Well, it's we were just we put all the ones that there. We all get a little pick it up. And come back with. Stream. Sorry, I mentioned. But mainly. I don't know. Three. This is. On that one. That's why. Yeah, you have the same. Their name is on here. Oh, they have your name on there. But surprise. My name is. Yes. Man. It's so. I'm not. My senses. It is cold. Well, he can't. He can't read. This well and like. Right. Can't adjust anything. I know. Part. Oh, yeah. But you are. I was gonna say so. But. I know. Park in my head. Yeah. I like it. I feel like. I feel straight. But it's not. That drove right on by. That's okay. But I think anybody was so. I was like the wheels been so crap. They might. They may go. They're nervous. Back in the man. I got. Great. It is. Are we? We're all like. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Not many things at all. Um. We need more. He has a right. One thing. You know, you have. You know, I think. I remember that. I mean, about. I think you're. Right. You're already. I kind of like. Definitely. Why not try? So that. Yeah. Probably. We're. I don't know. Something. I don't know. Yeah. That's not for me. Yeah. Right now. Saw you. That. Oh. But they told me they were gonna follow up with what did the mail since I. Okay. But but you. Yeah. Hello. Hello. How are you? Yeah. Good. But it's. They might. I want you to give me twice. There hasn't been. Where we. We want you to. You're winning. Okay. You're. Hello. And mine. Because I'm. So. Right. No. Yes. Anytime. Hey, James. And not goodbye. But. One is. A little. You know, probably. They're completely. So it's all about. You. I did say. Couple of miles. I didn't know. Especially. When. There's a. Okay. You. In the rally. Yeah. Now, but. Really long. Okay. Like call the. Board retreat to order. And we will start off with Miss. Right. For a minute. Here. There's the.
Oh. Nice to be back with you. So I'm gonna have you for the next three hours and we're gonna have a really rich discussion. Just kidding. Um. I've given each of you a folder and in the folder. You will find. On the left hand side, you'll see some information that will. Help you either today or in the future. The first is eight characteristics of an effective school board. Followed by. Uh GSBA's. Uh board and superintendent expectations, what the governing board expects the superintendent to do. And what in turn the superintendent expects the board to do. And at the back is the eight domains that we train on. So that will just be a reference point for you. On the right is a copy of the PowerPoint that we'll go through today. And behind that is your evaluation. Cool. And so if you'll fill that out at the end, or you can mark it as we go through the day. Fifteen seconds I have up here. Um, and then there's also to get your training hours. That we have two copies today because I wasn't sure if there would be copying capabilities. So I'll leave a completed copy to you and I'll take one. So. I'm so happy to be here. I'm so happy to see all of you. And um. I wanted to just ask each of you to think about. With the school district. What you're the most proud of? One thing that you can think of that you bless you the most proud of. And who would like to go first?
Gina.
Well, there you go. Hans, Hans. I stepped in and. Jay. What is? What is one thing that you're proud of about the district?
Um, the equity work that we've done.
Very good. How about you, Tasha?
I'm proud of the focus that we've promised and. And awareness.
Excellent.
Herman. Um, I am most proud after Whitaker and that's me. I think GGI conducted a very. Or. Or ten search. I'm very proud of the way. That's they made. The round. It's in a very.
And I've been following that work and it has been. Quite a Herculean task, but you handled it well. Thank you, James. How about you?
Good answers. Um. I'm immediately struck by how responsive. As a school system, what we are and have been, what the students need. Over the last few years, it's it's uh. Having gone through an election where we're at in several. Things with APS and the Cat County Board members who are. Fighting or at each other's. Roads. Um. Our biggest plan is is. Apparently why something wasn't fixed yesterday. But not this year. Be fixed. That's. So. Compliment. The system.
Yes. Hans.
Um. I I mean, I like echoing a little bit of what Herman said. I think it kind of ties everything together where we made the investment as a team into driving true changes. So that we no longer are talking about equity, but actually on the midst of events that. So we're actually able to put stuff together. We're at the help. Um. And. I think we forged a really great. He. And I just, I think that that we benefited because. We trusted each other. We've um. Disagreed respectfully. Uh and been able to work through that. And I think it's just. Made us really. We're we're definitely more than the sum of our products. Joining.
That's great. Yeah, like you, Dr. Whitaker. What are you most proud of?
I am most proud of. The team. And when I say the team, I mean, it's all facets of this team. So. Uh, obviously, the work that we do as a governance team. But I'm also very proud of the work that. The cabinet does as well. So. I can't sit here alone. Without a team that works well together. That affects one another. That's my belief until here of the governance team without being able to work well together and trust one another. And so just as you said, in the first ninety days, and as some of the cabinet likes to say ninety days plus. From the day I was announced in April. Um. We have worked well together. To to really focus on children and we focus on children, which is what we wanted to do with the board. What's our strategic plan? So. A little proud of that.
Well, it certainly shows and. Um, just a short time up in. Honored to work with all of you. It's it's easy to see why you're such a happy government's team. And the couple of things that you mentioned, I want to echo, and that is. The the board is. Inwardly and outwardly facing. When you face outward, you're representing the community. When you face inward, you're working with the superintendent to give superintendent direction. And same respect, the superintendent. Has two directions, working with the board to get that direction and then working with cabinet. And other staff members to help carry out the directives of the board. And you're all right in the fact that. It it's just been an election cycle. I know that. Tasha, you are rolling off the board and you're gonna have a new. Team member to come on. And it's important that you go back to basics to work with the new person coming in. So that they will understand their role. And um, you do have new board member training for everybody new that comes in. But. It's it's a challenge, I think, to. Um. Remember sometimes that you're you're put your. Influenced and likely so by. The community that elected you. But you're elected by the community to represent children. So all of your decisions should always be. Student centered. And I know that you are on that path and you just need to keep keep that way. So um. Today, we're gonna talk about the top six questions board members should be asking their superintendent. These really are around categories. So there are lots of questions that are in this presentation. And they will, even though most of these domains are highlighted, we'll probably touch a little bit on all of them. In the time that I have. So. Some of the things that can trip up a a board are absence of bold and courageous goals, unhealthy team dynamics. Ineffective communication, impaired access to information. Poor policy management oversight, a revolving door governance team members. Fortunately, you do not have that. And you just need to remember the things that you need to avoid, as well as the things that you need to stick with. These are, well. It didn't start out looking like this, but. Any any changes are due to, I've been told to a difference in the sizes of the screens. So five key attributes of a high performance culture. You touched on some of this when you were talking about what you were proud of. Trust and teamwork. Communication, ethics, collaboration, all of those are critical to having a successful team. So with um. A board has to decide that they're going to have oversight. You don't overstep into areas you're not supposed to have. But. The difference is. You need to recognize when you're overstepping. You need to figure out what's working, what's not working, how do you address what's not working? And I have a couple of exercises here. This is the first one. The XYZ school district is planning a capital project that includes a synthetic multipurpose field. One member of the board is opposed, believing that the field poses a serious health and environmental risks. That member uses social media to share the information on the issue. And links an article with a comment, don't be fooled or misled, toxic herb is hazardous to your child's health. Is this act an oversight or overstepping?
Oversight.
Why? What would? What would have been a better approach to to taking um? Up this concern? What?
At the board meeting?
Maybe at the board meeting, yes, talking about it with. With the other board members at the meeting.
We're talking to these board members. Want to correct. Can they? I'm hearing your perspective.
Absolutely. So I don't think anybody thought this was oversight, which is good. You know, have there been studies done to to see if? You know, there's one article this board member listed, but has staff been? Do you done their due diligence with looking into the issue to see if this is something that they should really consider? I have one more. The board member believes the superintendent's weekly update consistently fails to keep the board informed on important issues in the district. The member contacts the board president, who agrees to bring the issue up at the next meeting in a properly convened executive session. Is this oversight or overstepping?
Oversight.
It is oversight and it's okay to talk about this during executive session. That's one of the things that trips up some teams that they they think it's not. Executive session and conversation, but it is because it's the directive of the superintendent with regards to their evaluation. So this will play into that. So you guys scored a hundred. So the first question you need to be asking your superintendent is. How do we create a community and district-wide culture of continuous improvement? Plan strategically and align our operating plans to achieve strategic outcomes? I know you've done a lot of work on your strategic plan. Here are some questions to consider. Um. What elements of the strategic plan are leveling playing field for all students? A lot of districts have high performing students, but in even the highest performing schools, there are students that are struggling. So what is your strategic plan doing to help support that? Does it create support, a culture of continuous improvement? And how are you empowering schools and leaders in those schools to take ownership of problems and implement solutions? How how flexible are you with your schools in allowing them to collaborate and get support? To do what they need to do? So these are questions that you can tuck away and think about. Um, with student achievement. How are you monitoring the leading indicators to support all students achieving at grade level or above? And how are you communicating that information? Does the governance team have high expectations for every student? Do you really believe every student can achieve? Does the staff have those same high expectations? And what are the frameworks? Um, of proven practices that lead to student success? And what what kind of classroom experiences are your students having? The ones that are achieving low grade level and the ones that are not? And how are they getting support? How is the staff getting support to help those students? What opportunities is the district providing for teachers to share their best practices? To engage and motivate students? How are you encouraging those students and those um? Educators who are leaders but want to remain in the classroom to give them opportunities to help those other teachers that may be struggling? Um, are you looking at your policies and practices that make sure that they support student achievement? And are you rethinking the day about can you? Can you do something different? Can you have different? It's it's not all about just seat time. What what else can you do to help students and staff members? Get the best they can to their students? Accountability. How do we hold personnel accountable for developing and implementing school improvement plans? Are the school improvement plans tied to your strategic plan? They should be. They should be something that cascades down and up. And does every staff member understand their role in helping to support students? The bus drivers, the cafeteria workers. My mom was a um middle school cafeteria, much money lady. And I never really thought much about that. She had a part-time job. She'd go, come, she got summers off, got to help me with my grandkid, my kids, her grandkids. But we would be at the mall and there would be students that would come up to her. To speak to her, that we're excited to see her outside the school. And it made me realize, just collecting that money every day. Let her see what kind of day those kids were having, saying a nice word to them. The bus drivers are the first line of defense. Those bus drivers know when the kids get off the bus, if they're gonna have a good day or not. How did you support them in communicating that back to teachers and staff? The cafeteria workers, the custodians? What kind of interaction do they have? And do they know how important they are in the overall picture? Are the district policies empowering superintendent and staff, encouraging creativity, letting them think outside the box? And are you giving the superintendent and the staff the latitude they need to make this happen? Encouraging them to try things, to make mistakes, to to learn from those mistakes? Equity, which y'all are doing, and you take as a primary focus, which is wonderful. What policies, recommendations? Practices and data indicators are utilizing to make sure that you're meeting every child where they are? Are you providing the best education for every child, meeting them where they are? Making sure resources go where they need? Equity is not equal. And some students need more, some schools need, some classrooms need more. And making sure that. The community understands. What your process is for making sure that you're making every child have the best possible education they can have. Again, encouraging experienced teachers to work with the children that may have the greatest needs. A lot of times, those experienced teachers get the honors classes and the kids that are coasting and and know what they're doing. And sometimes those. Teachers are needed in other classrooms and encouraging them to use their talents to help those students. Sometimes it just takes an encouraging word from the teacher to make them, make students turn around. And sometimes it just takes an encouraging word from administrator to make a teacher realize what their potential might be. Um, transparency and commitment to getting the policies in place, which is the work of the board. When you set the proper policies in place, then that gives a superintendent good direction to then go and help the staff do what they need to for your students. Making sure that you look at gaps. Don't shy away from them when you you see them, identify them, figure out how you can close those gaps. Build a community support. And this again is another piece that the board has to work on because you are the outward facing. You afford the school district in your community. So how are you engaging and responding to responding to key stakeholders? Parents, business leaders, other folks, to make sure that they understand the importance of public education? Are you a chief advocate for public schools? How are you engaging every parent? A lot of times, parents don't know. What to do. They don't know the questions to ask. So helping parents feel comfortable in coming to teachers, to principals, to ask those questions. To helping to direct them because, as you know, it's not your job to solve the problems of the district. Your job is to try to help. Parents or other community members. Find the right path to get their questions answered. Um. Making sure that you expose students to field trips, STEM education, design thinking. Um, college and career. How how soon do you start college and career exposure for your for your students? There are some districts that in fourth and fifth grade have field trips that go to the local college so the kids can see. What they might be be experiencing, whether it's a um technical school or a junior college or. A university, private or public, just letting the students be there and see this is what's possible for you. How do you support doing those things? How do you give? Community partners to help do that? Because even a field trip costs money. And if you don't have the money in the budget. Finding a a business partner that might help support that or the college might have. Money available to pay for those buses and to pay the students. So there are lots of ways that you can engage the community. It's important to have. Um, conversations with all kinds of community partners you'll see in the. That bullet down there. Service groups, faith-based groups, chambers, elected officials, neighborhood associations, anybody you can think of. That might have an interest in public education. Bring them in, have welcome them as a partner, let them know what they can do. Um. And people a lot of times shy away from faith-based organizations. As long as they're not coming in and preaching. Everybody can be a mentor to a student. Everybody can be a supportive, working person or a staff member. So just having an adult for children to talk to sometimes helps them to connect to the district. Um, how do you engage the business community to determine workforce needs? Do you talk with the with the leading business owners and um employers in the city? To see what their employment needs are gonna be in the future? Do they offer internships? Do they offer summer programs? Do they offer a chance to come in and do a a shadowing for students and for staff? Um, how do you include stakeholder groups in the strategic planning process? I know you just did this and that's a critical component, but what you also need to do is keep them engaged. Don't let them forget that they got involved in this process and make sure you give regular updates to your community. About how the strategic plan is going. Um, fiscal responsibility. How do you ensure that you're being physically responsible? And how do you let that be known in the community? You know, anytime the budget comes up. There are people that that and if you have the concern about possibly raising taxes. You have to be clear about why you're doing that and what what the need is. And make sure your community understands that. You know, the importance of the special purpose local option health tax, that everybody helps pay for that. It's not just the people who live in your in your community that are too bad. Um, make sure you demonstrate how you're being the financial stewards. Talk about how the money is being spent, be transparent. Um. You know, an annual report that goes out once a year or something on your website or a state of the schools address. Whatever it is your district is comfortable with can help. Communicate what you're doing in the district. Um. And. As school board members, you're often asked questions. Out of the community at the grocery store or at the football game or whatever it is. And it's okay to say, I don't know the answer, but I can find out what that answer is and get back with you. Um, the more you understand and the more they understand that you are their conduit to help them figure the figure out the district. The easier it will be to gain partners in the community. So I would like for y'all to use the little time we have left. To um talk to yourselves, talk among yourselves and come up with some other questions around these six areas. Um. You can. Take any any other ideas for strategic planning, how to keep that. Um, point alive in the in the community and what questions you may want to ask the superintendent in the future. One thing that some schools districts do is they, with their agendas, they tie. Each agenda item to a component of the strategic plan. So when community members come and they look at this at the agendas, they'll see, oh, they really are using the strategic plan. And I was a part of helping develop that. So that may be one of my ideas. So we we do have fifteen minutes, so you don't have. I wanted to give you all some time to 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 go back and digest through those questions. Or if you've got any questions about the questions that I've already covered, we can go back. I keep that up.
I know. I actually wanted to come on. And that.
Yes.
Um, so I I like, I I like the more that we read it, the more I like the sport people are working on. And while I think these are good. Ways to think about the questions we should be asking. Um, it ought to be framed, every single one of those points needs to be framed around. How does it? Voice. Like I said, is the only, that's really kind of the only question. All of those questions help us get to the details, but we shouldn't be talking about this responsibility. So we shouldn't be talking about, obviously, student achievement and that will be. But all of that is. Um. I I I think it's gonna be a good exercise for us, particularly this budget cycle, as we start thinking about. Initiatives and things that we do. To be hyper focused on the impact on students and how we track and measure. You know. That, you know, just to bring it together with the other piece of work. Apparently, I think.
Are you reading? Did you read the book?
We're reading, we're reading right on their behalf.
Okay, so one of the things that great on their behalf. Helps board members figure out is how to connect their conversations around. And circle them back, as you said, Hans, to students. How does, what does, when we talk about the budget, how does that tie to student achievement and how how to help support students? What is, what does this mean when we're passing this budget? What does it mean when we're developing the strategic plan? The end goal should always be, is this what's best for students?
And specifically, how is this?
Right. What is this going to do? How will how will this help our students? How will this help every student?
So as we're building a budget this year, you know, we are taking a modified zero-based budget approach. Which is, which is new for our. So that means that. How do you ensure what it is that you are going? To request? Is actually tied to where in the strategic plan? And that it's been, we have some sort of return on investment thus far. Now, granted, we're not going to full ROI training. Lonia already knows, I've sent her that information and that is forthcoming. But I'm not going to do everything in one, but it's like the boat. So it's slow to go fast. Fair enough. Yes. A lot of. But a modified zero-based budget with a per people expenditure. So that we can start to really identify the variance between what we budget. And what we spend. Close it. And then closing the variance for what we expect to bring in. As far as all of our different revenue sources to what we actually bring in. So that's where all of those things are tied to students because it's how we utilize the budget. So we're working with the tax assessor's office and the tax commissioner so that we can get that latter part that I just mentioned. And we can nail down a lot more closely what we're expecting as far as revenues are concerned. And then working with the schools and the district to tie down more closely what we are actually budgeting and ultimately spending. So that's year one. Eventually, we'll get to true return on investment ideal as far as evaluation of programming and then the back.
Well, and, and most districts, in most districts, about eighty-five percent of your budget is fixed costs with salaries, personnel benefits. So it's just that little fifteen percent that you've got to work with and try to figure out how to get the biggest bang for your buck.
Well, I disagree with that actually. I, I think that you're also getting your biggest bang for the buck on that.
You are. That's the most important, that is the most important part. Yes. And, um, but that is somewhat fixed. You know, if you decide what your class size is going to be with the formula that comes from the state that directs that, you know, tag gets this much money and advanced placement courses get this much and kindergarten classes get this much. I do know that it'll be interesting to watch to see what the, the state school superintendent is bringing forth as part of his budget for the coming year because a couple of things that he talked about when I heard him recently were of course, the literacy initiative as well as the math initiative. But he's also um wanting to think about having pair of pros up through second grade, which many years ago we did have, and I think recognizing that need now, if he can convince the legislature to do that, that would help support the teachers in doing what they need to do to make sure that they reach every child.
Uh, yeah, so um, I know Karen, I'll allow you to speak to some of the things that we heard right before, but around what's coming up around the legislature. But then also um all of the key pieces around the science of freedom and its implementation. It's, it's not just one person's job. And that's what, why all cases you just mentioned, you know. Got a lot in that space prior to now and decided about what you need to see, you know, in the coming in very couple of weeks in the summer. So, Karen, what are we going to?
One question that came to mind as you were posing questions as you should consider. Um, Dr. Wood, are our um school improvement plans, are they accessible to the community?
They aren't accessible to the community. So one of the things I would love to see, and I'm starting really with, I'll meet with SLTs now, I think. And a couple of, and SLTs is
is the school leadership team, which is they put one of us. Yeah, so.
So I'll meet with them and in that we will talk about what the governance at the local school looks like. And then they will be able to explore what the school improvement plans look like for each and every school. But um, one of the things that they all have is a theory of action, which is what they identify after conducting what you caused in their day. So that has really unified, if you will, some of our school improvement work. Just yesterday, I met with and, and Karen, also on the end of the Carter's Real City. And they, their superintendent, and they wanted to know specifically, in their person who's in charge of school improvement, what are the systems and structures that are put in place to monitor student achievement and plan for improvement of schools? So I was able to share the those conditions that I believe really make the difference in the ways in which we started that work thus far.
Okay, so right now our school improvement plans are works in progress.
But as we work through it, the SLTs, then we will not ultimately begin to put the school improvement plan and you could be able to see the school improvement plan, their budgets, and ultimately the outcomes for children. It's really becomes a triangulation of documents to say this is really who we are and what we believe. The other two pieces you'll hear about in a little bit, so I'm not necessarily.
And then that, because that's typically a yearly process.
And it seems like it would be a natural place for those to be published as part of the annual budget for the people and stuff. Not what it is that they're now understanding and what they're doing.
So it, and that's why they have to, we have to identify some pieces at the district level and then it bundles to what is happening at the local level. And then that's how we build that blue line of code here so that you can say, these are the things we're focusing on district. And this is how it is, how it looks at each individual school with the level of autonomy that they do have because it is a charter, we are a charter system. So it's, it's a both, there are certain things that are whole types and there are certain things that are flexible. And so that school improvement is one of the whole type, but the ways in which they can implement could be something that is more complex. So that's what we're going to work through, starting with our SCLT, which are basically all the SLTs. And I'm reaching down and listen.
I wanted to mention what you mentioned, theory of action. That phrase is from a book called What School Board Can Do. Um, and there's a one chapter there that explains about theories of action. So if you haven't read that, you're good. So then that, that's a good thing, a good reference tool if people ask about it. Chairman Hergen, what are you going to follow up?
Share what we learned. Dr. Wittergren, I have a bit of the GC, the Georgia Education Coalition, um, meeting of other schools and the uh we started by talking about the Board of Education, which the Georgia BOE, which released their legislative priorities. Uh, and overall, I think I would say we were pleased that they overlapped between what our legislative priorities were and all the school boards are just a they're strengthening instruction support for all students was number one, including funding the early literacy laws, putting packs, we had, we had talked about that. Um, I, I'll forward this to the board afterwards. Um, the second was expanding opportunities for students, so funding pre-K, extending work-based learning programs, putting a paraprofessional in every kindergarten as part of the QBE formula. Uh, their third priority was uh student safety, supporting families. So um, you know, continuing to work on credits and safety funding for schools, which was great. They had a whole section on teaching profession and strengthening the teacher pipeline. Um, we spent some time talking about there was a change where the word bonuses was taken out and raises have been added in from the BOA for the first time for teachers, which, which we really liked. So the, the actual there is support of three thousand dollar pay raise for teachers to build on the raises secured by KIM and the general assembly's budget of bonuses with a goal of increasing to ten thousand dollars within the next three years. So they've announced they want the salary for the teachers to go up, which is fantastic. Um, and then finally, just fully funding the QBE formula, which you're gonna say this.
Has never been done.
But I was shocked that there was disagreement about the need to raise the QB formula. Yeah, so we was like, we should, we should revisit this. We should raise the QB formula. And there were other school districts and school systems who were against it. We think that, um, well, there was a, this is here state council. Uh, there is a if you raise the QB formula, it will make it harder for smaller school districts that are more rural to compete and to maintain high quality teachers. Um, it basically said was like, one of the reasons that we can get teachers to come live here is because it's more affordable to be a teacher and live in not metro Atlanta. And if you solve that, then you will steal teachers from us, basically, was there. And the other is just like a fiscal fear being said like, you open up QB and runaway budget, overfunding education, and how dare we, and that there was.
And, and another piece I would add is that one of the things we know is in QB, the weights in, we're gonna talk about that in about I was saying, a couple of minutes. But the weight's very based upon this freedom. And so one of the proposals is that we would add, you know, a poverty.
So there is no one.
There is not one.
These states will.
Without a poverty weight and then also potentially funding some, something different for transportation. So right now, what a school system spends in transportation as far as the fleet and the bus drivers themselves and the units of transportation is significant. So if you do two tweaks like that, well, you know, your budget is here. You can't make the pie bigger, so what's going to get smaller if you're going to add another piece? That's the fear, I think, part of it. Um, but I did explain, um, while we were there that we have over time uh really changed tweaks to QB. So the way in which we can serve students who are in the early intervention program, which is BIP is now changed, especially for charter systems because of changes in the ways that it was done for QB. So you can only serve them a certain way because certain districts were getting too many. So now, just last month, we had a presentation on advanced coursework for grade six through twelve, I mean, six through ten. For us, it's because we were utilizing collaboration as a gift with delivery model. Well, this thing is said, and you can use. Now, you did not just change QB, no, but you said the delivery model needed to shift. Therefore, you really did change it because if we didn't change the way we taught our children, we were going to lose one point seven million dollars. So no outwardly, you're not changing QB, I think of QB. But you are doing small tweaks and that's why I want you to be aware and, and know that they do it, but it's not, you know, free for all, runaway, like I think about runaway budget. It's, it's not that, but they are doing tweaks.
And for some, and the tweets seem to be more politically about, well, I mean, so it's like they're more funding for transportation. Um, like the Gwinnett uh personship, they spent a hundred and fifty million dollars on transportation in that school system and the state gives them, and he said eight? Eight. So it's a hundred and forty, forty-two million dollar gap. Uh, and there's no pushback on that. People are like, oh yeah, well, we should obviously fund transportation. But then that's weird if you're funding more for transportation than there's more money for everyone because it's ultimately at the end of the day, it makes one big pot.
It's just they had so many graphics.
Um, is there actual drafting of legislation around this or are you just talking so the GEC is forming a graphic of legislation to bring forward or are they just saying people want to see this? There's a difference between chalk and action.
Isn't it? I think it's a little early. So they had to bring us all together to see and we began to agree on what would be the priorities. So every district submitted their legislative priorities. So thank you, board, for approving those what you did because we were able to say these are our legislative priorities and they were very appreciative and welcoming of the city that they were into the GEC because we have not been in the past. So they were excited about that and excited that we had legislative priorities so that now they can really bring us together in a way. And it began, you know, is it a comma or is it an end? And it, it was like, okay, at that point, we need to transition and we left. They ended it, but you know, basically they'll give us another draft.
A lot of it is in response to legislation that doesn't.
And the GEC is like a smaller version of what GSBA does. GSBA pulls together all of the thoughts and ideas of the hundred eighty school districts. GEC massages all of the um commonalities with their member groups so that they can then go and lobby on behalf of the groups that are GEC members.
I was wondering, because I know the GSBA has legislative priorities. So I was wondering what was the difference and how different are the GEC's priorities than GSBA's priorities?
GECs are probably more focused. And, and they're more, the G, the GEC deals more with metro areas, larger larger and metro districts. So it's most of um districts in the metro Atlanta area are members as well as Savannah and I think Columbus and Augusta and Richmond County.
Charing.
Charing. So some of the, some of the things that might be common for metro districts that wouldn't necessarily apply to some of the smaller districts. GSBA cannot lobby for those unless everybody, plus the membership agrees on it. And similarly, with GEC, it'll be easier to get consensus with smaller groups that have more commonalities.
And so when you, if you recall, on the last slide of your legislative priorities, um, it listed GSBA, it listed GSBSK, which is the Georgia School Superintendent Association, GEC. We talked to multiple agencies that are like-minded as the strategic plan calls for, as we were drafting, drafting those priorities.
Something that you may already be doing this, but if you are not and you go down to the Capitol to lobby during the session, putting your priorities in bullet points and printing them on the back of your business cards or even printing them on Avery labels and then sticking them on the back of your business cards. It's easy to hand that to a legislator and say, this is what we're about. When you have time, flip the card over and you can read.
Those will be, I don't want to call them the fart and fart, but that's basically what I. It, it gave you a miserable. Yes, you do put budget for business cards and name like, you're welcome.
So I think my time is probably in the end. If you will, in your spare time, which I know you have a lot of, um, look back through those questions and just keep that as a, a reference tool for when you start talking about any of these ideas. And remember, you are modeling for the rest of the, of your district. So excellence in the classroom begins with excellence in the boardroom.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you will, complete the evaluation before I leave and sign this sheet before I leave. We're now on to the next.
Yeah. All right, so uh at this point, I would like to transition as to what we're all really here for, which are really the students. So when we think about our math data, how does our math data influence what we do with students? Ultimately, that instruction. But how do I really know which students need what? So that means I probably need an interoperable data system that allows me to filter and do certain things. Oh, boy.
Here we go. We all heard the interoperable data system office since day one, and we're getting there. And so today I'm going to share the beginnings of some of that work. Um, I'll start with some static reports. And then Esten is going to walk you all through how to drill deeper into the data. So as I'm sharing, in your folders, you have um what we call an elementary school note catcher. And so there are three columns. The first column, um, is for strengths, I believe. I'm not looking at them, all right, okay. The second column, thank you, are for opportunities for improvement that you noticed. And the last column is for wonderings that you might have. And so as we're going through these first introductory slides, I want you to be thinking about that. Because whatever you put in your wonderings column is going to drive some of um the work that you will do in digging.
Of, um, the work that you will do in digging deeper into the data. That won't be on the screen for various reasons, right? We're talking about student data. Um, in some of our subgroup areas for some schools, we don't have a subgroup of ten or more students. So when you get to smaller numbers, it's more identifiable. So we won't put all of that up here, but you will have access to that and that's going to walk you through how to see all of that, okay? So, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Jennifer Burton, has done various presentations on data. Here are the things that we already know, either from this year or from previous years. Overall, our students perform above average on most standardized settings. Our black students perform lower than other subgroups. Our black students' average national percentile ranking is declining in grades K to. Year over year, however, once they transition to upper elementary, then that national percentile ranking does increase. So this is what we've been told so far. We have had some wanderings. And so I'm going to share, before we go live into the data viz, I'm going to share just some snapshots. To answer some of these wanderings, just to give you a taste of what you're about to do. So one is, how do our students perform based on socioeconomic status? How do our students with disabilities perform in comparison to others? How are students performing based upon feeder patterns? And then what are our growth rates? Because it's one thing for students to have high achievement. And it's another thing for them to continuously grow. So that's what math tells us if we're growing all students, no matter where their starting points are. Okay, so here we have K eight math, math achievement. Over here, we have the dates, um, months and year. So, spring of twenty twenty-two is what is represented there, all the way to currently fall, August twenty twenty-three. Each bar represents an achievement level from low to high. Over to the right, we have all a number, the exact number for all of the students represented here. And then the numbers, the student numbers for each performance level. So, overall. Students scoring, um, at the high level. Are about one thousand six hundred and forty-six students. And then we have about two hundred and forty-one students scoring in the low. Two hundred and ninety-one scored in the low average, four ninety-one average, and eight hundred and four average. So you're gonna see several charts that are formatted just like this. Okay, question?
Should we? Should we be comparing May, or should we be comparing August twenty twenty-two to May twenty twenty-two in terms of the improvement over the year? Or should we be comparing May twenty twenty-three to May twenty twenty-two to compare? By class group. What's the right way to look at this data? And maybe it's both, but what information am I looking for in, in however I would choose to evaluate the data?
You're right, it is both. So, we can look at. From August twenty twenty-two to May twenty twenty-three, that's the same school year. We can look from fall to fall, which we rarely do. Right? We only look from, look at one school year, fall to spring, but it doesn't tell us over years how our students are performing. Which is why today's glimpse is gonna be from fall to fall because it shows. Uh, the students who started in August twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, where they are come August twenty twenty-three. Are we growing in our high range? Are we decreasing in our lower ranges? That's what we're looking for. Does that make sense? If we look from May twenty twenty-two to May twenty twenty-three, then we're looking spring to spring. And you can do the same kind of comparison, where are they in the spring, at the end of each school year? Okay, you have any questions? Alright, so now let's look at students who qualify for free or reduced lunch. Same years, same levels of performance. We have five hundred and twelve students that are represented in this data. Yes.
This, I mean, this is what we're hearing.
So if we go back to this chart, which is all, and we go back to. Our free and reduced lunch population, what do we notice as far as representation in the progress? Okay, so this is math. Let's take a look at reading. So here we have all students. And then we have our. What questions are coming in yet?
And this is really what we've been trying to get at. We see hints of this over the last couple of years, it would periodically pop up in different slides, but I think. At least from where I sit, my one vote is going to be heavily privileged on everything that we do in this case.
And most of our, um, subgroup data that we shared have, have been around racial groups. We haven't done a whole lot with the economic side. Um, so let's look at students with disability. So we have three hundred and six students represented, K through eight.
What's the overlap with three of these much?
Great question. What do you notice?
No, 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 I mean, of the three hundred and six, are there, are, are all three hundred and six? In that five twelve? Are they separate from the five twelve?
Could be. That's a great question. We can dig deeper to see of these three hundred and six students. Of these, so your question, your question is, of these three hundred and six students. How many of those students receive free or reduced lunch?
So, so essentially, you know, we're building up so that you will be able to see the answer back. For yourself.
And Karen, how are you finding kids with disabilities? That could be, I mean, it was making sense for difficulties, I mean, that could be. In my mind, that could be a physical limitation, that could be if they got trouble hearing, that could be, I mean, that's, that's a very odd term to use. Um, before we immediately jump to the topic, maybe the student with disabilities needs a child that has. A reading or an I P, anything.
This number represents every student who has an I P. That could be all of the above.
Is not a five oh four.
So five oh four is not included in this number.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is as determined by I D C A, you have, you are a student with a disability.
And identify disability that we've written an individualized education plan for that's on record that we've logged and stayed. All the above, did I get it, get it right, Francis? Alright, and here are our students with disability in the area of reading. What did you notice?
That. As we go back to the reading. There's a high roof that takes out, that we're doing something in reading to reach some of the students, it's not working.
If you notice in math. It may not have, excuse me, reached the high levels as yet, as, as you were pointing out in reading. But it is trending in the right direction.
Also, remember, May of twenty twenty-two, we're still very much. Under immediate heels of project. And what we know about the pandemic is that it impacted. Students of color, students with disabilities, and also students below socioeconomic status. More significantly, the data has said that across the entire region. So as you're coming closer, you know, further, for moving further and further from it. You're starting to see where the recovery. To true now, based on the instructions.
I'm glad you said that, Whitaker, because, um, May twenty twenty-two does not represent the same number of students. Because families had the option of allowing their students to test or not, um, in the spring of twenty twenty-two. So you'll see that difference as we go along as well.
And this is on, that was on math, this is on math, math.
Yes. Um, so, K two feeder patterns, this data represents the schools that feed into Tally. And so we have here first Claremont in all of the years. And how the students who started K two in Claremont, their performance as students in Tally or at Tally.
These are, this is. These are Tally students that came from Clare?
Yep.
Okay, in each year, the first, like, third grade Tally students, okay.
Okay, so that's Claremont. Who said it? Okay, tell me why you.
A lot of our students from other.
And so you see a difference there in. So one question we might dig deeper into would be. How many students from Claremont fall within that lower socioeconomic status? Do you have it there on your paper? Look at you, model student. In comparison, in comparison to, say, Glenwood, who also. Um, as James pointed out, have students. From the same community, okay? And then lastly, here is Phenomena Park. Seventy-five percent of the Phenomena Park students feed into.
Is that all of Phenomena Parks down or just the Tally here?
Just the Tally. So seventy-five percent, one fourth, we get it, they get it. It'll always be home, right? Okay. And then we'll just take a look at Beacon Hill. So we have two schools that feed into Beacon, Beacon Hill. Here is Fifth Avenue. There's that May twenty twenty-two again. What are you wondering?
Well, I mean, just congratulations, Beacon Hill, for addressing that. I mean, obviously, with what's due, that's. To move that much that quickly.
That's so, that's so drastic. There has to be some data outlier there that drove that. That's so drastic. So, the number of students.
Yeah.
The number of students in that May of twenty twenty-two.
Most definitely lower, and, um. You had, um, more affluent families choosing not to have their students do a testing that year. And I can speak to that for faith because I was there. Okay? And then we have Ellie.
That's a wrap for the questions, Sam.
You can, you can also share, because I'm curious about what's, what's coming up for you.
Just wondering, why is the number so much lower in May of twenty twenty-two for Tally than it was for Bay? Or, um, below.
So we can drill down and look at the actual number of students. Socioeconomic makeup, racial makeup, and all of that.
This page is lower. The rest, in the low category, the percentages are lower.
So we need to investigate that before we can really talk about the implications of prevention to seeds and.
Yeah, to Carmen's point, if. If this is a, like, thirty-student difference of N. Then something has changed in instruction. If this is a five hundred-student difference in N, then the data doesn't, May twenty-two is just basically not usable. And like, we don't really know that.
Yep, so when you get into the viz, you may want to go straight to Fay, May twenty twenty-two, and look at that data. To, to confirm what you're thinking, or to answer the questions that we have.
Question, I guess, for the educator, how much more data do you get from May to August? You know, I mean, I feel like May and the year's eligibility combinations are over the beginning of the year, over the end of the calendar year. And then August, at the beginning of the year, it's held you kind of a benchmark. So how much more do you expect for the data showing you in terms of. Your skills between that May and August?
So, it, it's around, it's around summer slot. So, if not lost, yeah, that's the key piece. So when children are not in school, depending, and this is what the research and services told us. Is that depending upon what type of activity and or enrichment or non-activity you do during the summer. Will have implications for whether you come back right where you are or potentially a little further ahead. Or did you have learning loss or what would be considered the summer slot? And so, that is why you take a fall assessment to do that. Also, through a universal screener, you want to start out the year, especially in a younger grades. You want to start out with a universal screener because one is best practice. You need to see where the children are with the skills of what they need to know and understand, they need to be able to do at that great level. With that said teacher, knowing what the curriculum is moving forward. So that's why you give it in September, August, but then at the same time, they've had something at the end of the year. That's why you have.
You want to confirm that they retain that, and if not, then that has implications for what we might offer in the summer. Because we can have some summer programming, but it's not really robust, right?
Uh, so we, at the very beginning, we had the statistics about black students and the K and the K for two. But in these other slides, we don't. We haven't looked at them in terms of where they are with math and reading, so. How do we plan to capture what's happening?
That's a great question. So, we can go back and investigate now that we have. Let's say if we want to look at Fifth Avenue, May twenty twenty-two. And we can click on ethnicity and choose just black students. But I am going to give just a small glimpse. I didn't do a whole lot with the racial breakdown because that's typically what we see. Right? We've seen a lot of that, so I wanted to explore some of the other subgroup areas that we don't share as much. But my last hurrah, we'll, we'll talk about racial breakdown for K two. Okay, um. We did that. Here we are. That was a great segue. I didn't even realize it. Okay, so now we're talking about map growth. We just moved from achievement, and now we want to know. What percentage of students are really meeting the anticipated growth rate? So map gives every student a growth target based upon how they score in the fall. So yours, your growth target might be different than mine, um, and vice versa. Map anticipates that at minimum, fifty percent of the students will meet it and fifty percent won't. That puts you in the average range for growth. Anything over fifty percent of the students meeting their growth target is a little bit above and beyond depending. Okay, so what we see here are the percentage of students who met or exceeded their growth target. Um, as first graders. So what we have here is these students start. These students started as kindergartners in the fall of twenty twenty two. They are now in first grade. So from fall twenty twenty two to fall of twenty three. What percentage of students grew at the anticipated rate that MAP says based upon their fall schedule? So for Asian students, sixty-six percent of them did. For black students, thirty-six percent. Hispanic, sixty-eight, multi-ethnic, sixty-six, and then our white students, sixty-four percent. Okay. Now we're gonna look at first to second grade. Yeah, our students are not growing as much as they move through our K two schools. In particular, first to second.
Isn't second grade where they start to read on their learning map and they don't have the questions right to them? I don't know, that's the.
That is, but the norms are also designed for that. So. When that norms the test, it norms against the number of students who also read it for the first time.
So if we're saying fifty percent pile is. Effectively, what you can figure of is average across multiple school systems, or well, well below average.
But for second grade, these are current second graders and this is. Um, their performance from first grade to second grade. So for this math. That would be true for every sub, except our, except our Asian students.
And given just the aggregate numbers of the system, it holds true for this system.
Um. So. I took this screenshot from a MAP report, so it's not as jazzy as the other stuff. But you can see language arts over time. And so the bar indicates growth. The diamond indicates the target. This is where students should be. This is where MAP says, if you started here in the fall, this is where you should be. Um, fall of the following year. And so we can see again, second grade. Is far away from meeting that mark. And pretty much all the other grades are there. Almost there or more than there.
This is, it's second graders.
These are our current second graders because they were in first grade.
Is it, when we start doing this on our own? Does the data exist to look at other cohorts of second graders? So in other words, if I wanted to explore whether this problem is consistent at second grade. Or whether it is a problem that we have created in this second grade. Does that data exist for us to explore?
You can look at second grade in twenty twenty two. You can look at second grade in twenty twenty three. You can look at second grade from how far does it go back?
And for the one that you pulled screenshots from a point of view looking to is coming through the seven years. So we, we may not yet know whether this is a trend or an.
We will have two years of data that we can look at, but it's not enough to, yeah.
I mean, it's just.
But you've been giving, you've had MAP. For. You should be it. Once you build it into operable data. It will pull runs to the historical data all the way back. You will just filter. Yeah, so that's why when you saw last. Our board retreat in August, when I could show you your current ninth grade. And it had so many bars because those current ninth graders were taking milestones as early as their fourth grade scores. Now, everything was a, a PDF and a pen. But once you have a full data system, but the file that comes from the state comes into the system. And we just, or the file comes from MAP or comes from STAR, any other assessment we're using. And we're, we're just able to do what we need to do from the system.
And to Dr. Whitaker's point, we could pull this information to answer that question. What has second grade looked like for the past five years? It would just take much more time and effort than an interoperable system.
Argument. You're saying generally all second graders are not meeting actual standards. Is there a way to look? At a downfall to a downfall, because you just look at feeder patterns to say that. Claremont consistently does not meet actual standards, but I know the part does to figure out if there are. If it's not that just we universally are not meeting standards, but maybe I know the part that we're supposed to. Glenwood does. Is there a way to be kind of dissect that data by a school rather than looking all the second graders together?
Yes, that is why, that's really those things. And you'll see the last question of this. Which is, how do you, what did we do as a governance team? With this data? So I don't expect you to now go and do the lesson plan and creating a lessons, but. From a governance standpoint. What does this mean for our budget? What does this mean for, you know, equity as far as resourcing? Support of people and support of, of, I will say, training. And obviously, resources themselves. So all of those sorts of things. Are what is used to create what would be an equitable budget based upon students.
And it also could be that we need to do more professional development in second grade. For the teachers, or it could be that's a cohort of students that we need to make sure something different happens best thing. Okay, um, I think the last look is that map. And you'll see the same. Wow, I think you're ready to dig deep, all right? Baby? Ready or not, here you go.
Good afternoon. So what I would like to do with you all is one, give you just a live demonstration of what I really want to call out. Alexis and where did Anthony go? Anthony's hiding behind the pillar over there. And Alexis is our Director of Assessment and Accountability and Anthony um is our Student Data Coordinator. And you heard back at the uh very first board retreats. Dr. Whitaker had this really compelling view of our ninth grade cohort over time. And she invoked the need, not for the first time, of interoperable data systems. And at the ninety day renew. There was more data, but she echoed a lot of pecking by staff and our staff are doing that. They have expertise in some of the other areas. They need to spend their time doing something else. And so what we've been working on over the last couple of months. Has been to resurrect a data viz tool that had been in place and then unfortunately languished over time. Pandemic was there, there are components of it, but we're reviving our instance of Tableau, which is an enterprise-grade data visualization tool. And thankfully, I, I didn't prep Karen for this question on the front end. But I'm going to guess, Karen, did you spend a whole lot of time on those screenshots, hunting and pecking and typing things in? That was, that's a pretty emphatic head shake from Karen. So we're. So I'm going to show you to give you an orientation of what we have built. And then we're going to recreate that first drill down of feeder pattern because that question has come up from you all of. How are our schools prepping our kids to feed up into that upper elementary? And then like, I hear you Hans, like you've got all kinds of questions and you all have questions too. It's gonna be a, a free release time. We're gonna get you into the tool itself and let you drill down. And answer some of the questions that came up around disability, around looking at comparisons between twenty-two, twenty-three data and so on and so forth. Does that sound fair? All right, cool. So um. Before I, I'll invite you, please, to open your laptop. Let's see, Hans, you already did. Still check that everyone's on login screen. And bear with me for just a moment because I probably timed out over here. I did. You don't need to log, I was, kids can double check if you're on the right login screen, but for now, don't sweat it. And I'm gonna log in as Mr. Herndon. James, thank you, by the way, for being. Tests. Log in as you, because my view is just way too messy. And here is our MAP assessment, twenty-two, twenty-three. And you will see a bit more on the screen than what Karen captured from the snapshot because in addition to the bar graphs. We have a whole host of filters. And so imagine, if you will, a few months ago, preparing for the first treat or preparing for the ninety day review. You've got staff copying and pasting or, God forbid, typing in and transcribing data from a PDF. What Alexis and Anthony have done is they've pulled raw file from the testing vendor and applied a whole host of filters on top of it. And we can slice and dice this any number of ways. On the screen and Karen invoked this at the beginning, but I just want to emphasize it for you all. We're not going to drill down super deep on this screen because we start getting into very small cohort and demographic sizes. And particularly with guests here in the room, we had to be sensitive to not violating student data privacy. By potentially putting scores up there that we can trace back to them to identify a student. But for this view for MAP, we have both our math and reading tests. You can drill them and pick either one. We have our students' current enrollment school. And we also have their feeder schools. And we do have a few students who have hopped between schools. We can select multiple feeder schools. And we can even have the opportunity to see if our kids have had a line of enrollment for college heights. If our college heights kids, like they're our babies, we have had them. They are truly ours. Right?
So when I use Tableau in the past.
Yeah.
What it will do is start to constrain. The query, if you get below statistical significance, so that you aren't looking at really, really small ends and drawing incorrect.
This isn't, this isn't doing that yet, but what I do want to point out, but a few question, a few questions came up, particularly uh May twenty-two test size and what's our end for that?
Yeah.
We have the percentages, but if you hover over, you will get a. And so, for example, there is that question about tally street, Fifth Avenue, May twenty-two performance and a thirty-three percent versus a much smaller. Seven students for the thirty-three percent, sixteen students at the other campus.
Is this gonna ultimately be publicly facing?
So, let me. They have seen my vision. This is not my vision because you need a login to see this. What I believe there should be a public version of this that zeros out those. And we set the parameters, we set the parameters to say, if it is this number of children. It's just like when you see it's, any type, any type of data cannot be fact. Like it tells you that the number is too small. We cannot do that. We will have data visual on a public face. First school or the, the. So they've seen um what. It's not even in Georgia, what I believe is probably one of the cleanest websites. Um, which is why I asked for what I'm gonna ask for it in next month. Um, but to take that website as well as what that website tells the public. About the schools and the school system. Cabinet has seen it. We all took around in it. They noted that this is not it, but that is.
This is, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I have a question about feeder schools. Can you explain to me how I interpret those numbers?
Um, these raw numbers are head counts of students. These are unique student, unique student IDs. Did I get that right, Anthony?
Yeah.
Come with your roses, please. Anthony has done tremendous amount of work. To ensure that this was ready today. Because we know it was not ready. When I gave the ninety day report. But he has done tremendous amount of work, so thank you.
I, I, I still don't know. These numbers down here.
This is the number, so this default, let's see here, um. We have, in this view of two years of assessment data, we have fourteen hundred and ten kids who have a line of enrollment at college heights. We have nine hundred and ninety-five, so this is across multiple assessment years. So it's a, it's a head count of kids. I think it will become clearer as you drill down into individual schools or individual assessment windows. Um, we have multiple programs here, um, five oh four gifted homeless status and. What does homeless status mean? Well, if you will open your participant folder for today, you will see. Something of a data dictionary. That tells you, whoops, that one's upside down, which tells you, one, where in our student information system is this information coming from? And also, what is, what does this actually mean? So homeless is, you know, we got a short character limit here. This is representative of students who are qualified for support through McKinney-Vento program. And you can see that there's a long paragraph about McKinney-Vento. You can't squeeze it all in right here. We'll eventually have a mouse over that will explain what each one is. But if you have one reason, Carmen, I heard your question about disability, right? In Karen's screenshot, she was pulling students with a disability, students who have an IEP. But students who also qualify for a five oh four plan. Also have a disability or impairment that impedes a major life event. And so those are two different lenses to look through. And you can look at five oh four participation. We can look at students with special education services through IEP. We also have in here not to be confused. EIP, which is our early intervention program for students K five through multi-tiered systems of support. And I do just want to apologize for one error. If you look at EIP. This is one of the cutoff scores is thirty-five percent. It's thirty percent. That's a revision, I think, this year. Every single one of these, these yes, no's, these feeder patterns. And even the performance bars is a clickable filter. So if you want to drill down by feeder pattern, and I'm going to invite you to do so in a minute to recreate one of those views that Karen did, you can. If you want to click and say, tell me about students who were performing low in August twenty twenty-three for one of these assessments. And look backward and look for a profile of these students. You can. You can see the animations as these bars flip, flop and change and as these percentages shift and some of them can be quite. Does that sound compelling? Do you want to get into it? Try to be talking. So everyone's at the login screen.
Version of Jane's question, basically. Go on, make sure I understand this. If I want to look at the Beacon Hill students who've been with us since college heights, that's what that does.
Sure. And so I'm gonna click on Beacon Hill. Our current Beacon Hill students. And I'm gonna click on college heights. And when it gets super messy or you've drilled down super deep. Your friend, bottom of the screen, third icon from the left. Reset view.
Wait. So in theory, we could say we want to see the kids that are at Beacon Hill in sixth grade that have been with us since college heights. Try to look at the factor of maybe who they are at the early education.
Not in theory, in reality, you can do it in about thirty seconds. Want to take a look? Yes, all right. So on your screen. For your use. Uh, yeah, stop talking and let you, let you click.
Welcome to our seats.
Um, Janie, you walked in with, are you good using the laptop we've got in front of you? We're in login to infinite campus. Your username is your CSD email without the at csdkitter.net. So Jay Hearn, C Sultan. And your password is your CSD Google Workspace password. And if you don't remember it. Kit will help you. No, you're not doing an email, just type. On that infinite campus login screen.
No, your Gmail.
So, oh, as, so you're not using your infinite campus parent login at all?
Using my Gmail, my.
CSD.
CSD Gmail.
Well, Kit, why don't you come out and see right here, go behind Jane and help her out?
When we log on, you don't, you got.
I'll send you an email when it's done. I mean, they ignore that whole password. Are you in okay, Jen?
So you can either do.
That's something that you.
The other thing is twenty-one students. I mean, I think.
It's what you don't have.
Oh, it was terrible. It was her first time back. It was quite a trip.
But, but there was a lot of.
Anthony's helping Hans get in, just to show, just as a proof, proof that it works. Karen showed you math, math at Tally Street with Claremont feeder students. This is her screenshot. You and Hans, thank you for your forbearance. To recreate that view, click math, math, Tally Street. Working on that. Hey, Command, yes. Command, let's just select multiple.
So, okay, so back to this, so.
Let me, let me suggest you add August twenty-twenty-three because that'll capture the most recent. Got Sultan, did you get it? Thank you for your forbearance. What are you curious about?
So. From my son, but don't.
But I didn't even know what was about her. Whole degree for everyone.
So we need to turn down screen time, Mars.
Okay.
Ladies, ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna, we're gonna keep going. So. And I saw Han shoot up from his seat and go say, let me show you what I found. So I'm like, we're be, we're beginning to scratch the itch. But like Dr. Waker said, we are not there yet with this, right? This is a snapshot. This is a, this is more of a view than we have had recently, but it's not the holistic view. Um, even within math and certainly looking at all the other components that affect our students. We don't have behavior tied into this. We don't have attendance tied into this yet. It sounds like MTS, yes, it does. So what's coming for us? And actually, the one thing that I did not, well, maybe not the one thing, but one thing I did not put on here, but uh, Hans asked about Dr. Whitaker spoke to, was being able to provide the infrastructure for some public facing business. So that we're all, all of our stakeholders, including those who don't have the luxury of a CSD login, have access to the same snapshot and the same kind of source of truth information about where our students and our performance supporting our students are. Um, we're looking at adding additional longitudinal data for our various assessments and comparing between assessments. One thing that you have access to, it'll take a minute to load if you wants to look at it. It's a, but it's a draft. It's not ready for prime time. Map is one assessment we have, but students also take milestones. Students uh, will take milestones and star next year. We have other assessments that our, that our students go through and being able to compare those, sometimes even those apples to oranges comparisons provide valuable insight. And so, but being able to merge that together, that engineering is fairly complex. Um, and then, you know, we start off with this very broad view of thousands of kids and student ID numbers. And we drill down more and more and more. You all did this to see needs. Eventually to the point of by name and by need like that. And Dr. Waker talked about the Clarion call fall. By name and by need is what I grew up here as an educator. And that's kind of the flip side of, instead of looking broadly, we want to look in depth at our individual students by name, by need, their face. And the metaphor I like is the notion of baseball card, right? What are their statistics across the board, not just on math and star, but also attendance, behavior, um, family stability and so on. That work is underway, but that work is also a reason that we have a mid-year adjustment for thirty thousand dollars for some additional contractual support to accelerate the velocity that we're able to deliver this. Dr. Whitaker, to our instructional leaders, to our principals in particular, who need to guide the pathway create those school improvement plans that we're just talking about forty-five minutes ago so that their actions are deliberate and focused on outcomes for kids. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, because that was my question. Whose responsibility will it be to take down at the individual student level?
So that's where the baseball card piece comes, comes into play. So we're not there yet. We're not there yet. But by next school year, when we're talking about the ways in which we need to support students, it will be, we know who it is and what they need. And this is how we're going to do it. So that's why the MTS S comes into place, the at-risk reporting comes into place. And then ultimately the system with evidence-based interventions. All of that comes out of, that's next year, but we're putting all the plumbing in this now.
And Jen, I'm glad you asked that question because you've been a teacher here in the school district. And one of the reasons that we're building Tableau within infinite, it might seem counterintuitive. Why the heck go through IC to get to Tableau? But ultimately, part of our vision is these insights into students, we want our classroom teachers to have. Our principals are the, like, they are the leaders of the building and they set the vision. But the most meaningful relationships for our kids are those teachers who see them day to day, today. And so a benefit of doing it in campus is I, we build a biz for principal. They see their whole building, but that same resource is available to the teachers and they see the kids on their schedule. And we build it one place, but depending on whom you have access to within campus, that dictates what you have insight into. And I imagine for a moment, if you had had that at Beacon Hill Middle School, right?
You should have pulled the baseball card up, but particularly.
There you go. Yeah. Working on it. Appreciate your support. And if you have wonderings or whatabouts or ideas, um, we'll, we'll take them up at the end. We've got a laundry list of things we want to realize too, but your input, because you are consumers of this also and decision makers as a governance team. And I think that actually transitions back to the question that you planned to see for earlier.
Yeah. So how does the inter-optical application come along? How we might use this? When we talk about it a little bit thus far, and I will call it perhaps, um, and also our next winner, this one will be Cliff. But um, this is really where our students, this is the outcome. The math data, when we look at the milestone data, all of that. Now we're going to talk about the, one of the inputs in the ways in which we serve children. And is it effective? Is it efficient? And does it really truly communicate success for all the learners? Otherwise known as the map schedule. Yes, the map schedule. So when I worked in Fulton and also when I worked in Atlanta, there is a role of, which is called like the master schedule or the master schedule. Because you have a hundred in, you know, hundred-plus schools, sixteen, seventeen high schools, twenty-plus middle schools. And if you don't schedule properly, you aren't able to earn the funding. So I know Julia spoke about the way in which you earn that QBE or that teacher allotment. We will talk about the allotment we earn from this page. But we will also talk about all the additional teachers that we pay for locally. But we will also talk about all the additional teachers that we pay for locally. And what is that cost? We know internally the benefits. But we also know some of the things that we want to move forward with compensation. So we've been talking a lot about finances and fiscal management and stewardship, but a lot of this has to do with the nuts and bolts, brass tacks of how we serve children on a daily day basis in the master schedule. And so I've asked Ron Terusa, Dr. Ron Therese and McKenna to come in. She was the master scheduler of master schedules in Fulton. Um, uh, like I said, that role was in both districts. Uh, but basically, how do you train? People to maximize funding for FTE so you can get QBE, so you can get the number of teachers you need to ultimately even students. And it's a science to it, and it's an art. It's both. So I heard a lot when I came in of. Uh, we're overstaffed at high school, or I've heard, and some people say, we don't really teach the students what students want at the high school. I've heard things in the listening sections, uh, you know, we just need the schedule to be different. We're not getting enough out of it. Those were some of the things that I heard in the listening sections. And master schedule order is one of the things I already told you back in spring I wanted to give. So. Thank you.
Good afternoon. So we're gonna go ahead and start with the current state of Decatur High School. So we had the first cycle. So MTE comes out in four cycles, but then three reported as cycle one and cycle three. Cycle one is in October. That is the first Tuesday in October. Cycle three is in March. That's the first Thursday in March. So we've already had cycle one, and this is what we earn on FTE. That is our students. So students have to be enrolled for six segments in order to get funding. If they have less than six segments, you lose funding, which is the O segments, where we lost eight thousand dollars because we had four students who were not scheduled for six segments or more. Well, we did earn six million. So this is the Georgia DOE rule on individual class size funding ratio. I'm not gonna read it to you, but this is why we have to make sure we maximize class size, because we will not earn funds for those classes that are underserved. So we have program weights. Each school, each district, each grade level has a program weight for each class. So if the classes are not coded correctly, they don't have the right program on them, you will lose funding. So you need to make sure that all classes are coded correctly. So we talked about FTE and we talked about funding. So high school students nine through twelve, basic classes is the minimum. That is what FTE is designed around. So again, all our generate classes are going to be our lowest funding. As we go up, we have our tag, we have, which is our gifted, we have our special needs. All those classes are gonna earn more funding than the general education course. So we want to make sure that we're scheduling kids correctly and in the right courses. Currently, based on first cycle count, you earn one hundred and twenty-two teachers. You're locally funding twenty, and you have a current amount at the high school of a hundred and forty-one. Counselors, you earn three point six seven. You're locally funding one, you have five. APs, three point eight three. You're locally funding one, and you have a total of five. So what is this costing? Base salary. This is base. This is a first year teacher through third year with a bachelor's. And as you know, many of our teachers at the high school have higher degrees and more years of experience. So the state pays this in base salary. Any teacher that is over that, the state will give you additional teaching and learning experience past the three, thirty-seven thousand. Now, they also are gonna pay health benefits up to eleven thousand dollars. So if you take that for the twenty teachers that you're locally funding, you're paying nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, almost a million dollars. Now, it's more than that because this is a base salary. So if we think about their years of experiences and their degrees, it's more than that. Now, that one counselor, again, at base salary is forty-eight thousand. That additional AP is another forty-eight thousand. So just those numbers right there is over a million, and we don't even know what their years of experience is. So total here plus local supplements, and I'm averaging at the base local supplement as one point three million dollars. Now, this is where we get into the less than average class size. So in class sizes that are going to be our IB, our AP, and our gifted courses, those courses are funded at a minimum of eighteen kids. Then we have our general ed courses that are funded at twenty-three or more. We have our special needs classes. We try to average them between six and eight, because depending on the disability of the student, you have to have, you have to have less students in that classroom. So we try to average it between six and eight, so that we don't have to go through and look at each student's IEP to schedule them. So you have seventy-four classes or sections, if you want to look at it that way, at the high school that receive less than the classroom minimum. So first and seventh period, we give them those periods because those are when our, most of our kids are dual enrollment. So either in the morning or in the afternoon. But then we have the rest of the periods where we having kids and courses that are less than the classroom funding size. Now, there are fifteen additional teachers needed to cover those seventy-four sections. Why do you say that? Because teachers are only teaching five sections. So if I take those five, that's six, that's seventy-four divided by five, it's gonna give me fourteen points. Can't have a point teacher. So you need a whole teacher. So it's gonna give me fifteen teachers. With fifteen teachers, that's costing you seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars plus local supplement. That's on base salary. So the current schedule that you have with your students who are taking seven classes, but teachers only teaching five, this is the sections not meeting funding. We're paying for twenty teachers. So that's the, that's five additional teachers past that fifteen. The difference from teaching five sections. So if the teachers were to teach an additional section, that price would drop, but because they're not, you're having to incur this cost because they're teaching five sections and then our O segments. So we lost in funding one point one million dollars. Yes, sir.
The most number of students, so that's really where you're earning a lot of funding. And we have so many identi- identified children. Which is also another piece of it. But if they're all experiencing win and advisement, they're not in one of those AP IV classes that are at the higher weight. So we're losing money by having advisement and win on Tuesdays and Thursdays because those are FTEs. So you all know I was a gifted teacher in elementary school. On Tuesdays and Thursdays is when I taught. The most children. I pushed in and did collaboration and class figure and those things on Mondays and Wednesdays. But Tuesday and Thursday, I had the most children that were identified because that's where you're going to make your money in FTE. And you have to schedule that intentionally, so you can, that's why. When we were going back to the G E C conversation, it's like, don't mess with it because we have it all figured out. They're playing the game. We are doing the opposite of the game.
So now, let's look at the current number of teachers. So based on infinite campus, these are the current number of teachers. By departments. So we have a total of a hundred and forty-one teachers at the high school. Now, these are the options for our schedules.
So um, we gotta play the game. So um, and like Dr. Whitaker said, when it comes to scheduling, we have to be strategic. Um, but first, we have to meet the needs of our students. Um, so we've come up with three different options. And then we are going to take the options to the teachers and students to get their input. Um, but these three options all result in the same amount of funding. So what we're looking at is doing a four by four block. So that would be four classes every day, just every other day. So you'd have your A day. Those four classes, your B day, those four classes, and then you go back to your A day four classes. And it goes back and forth. And with this one, the first one, we have win time and advisement for thirty-five minutes. It's a little bit longer. Um, and the second schedule is the exact same, but Dr. McKinney calls it a skinny win. Um, because it's thirty minutes, it's smaller. And the, the reason is because we need to figure out about transition times and if there are staff that are there. When it comes to high school transitions. So we've got two options there. Um, and then the third option is a traditional seven-period day. Um, we met with Principal Spool this week. Um, and talked to him about the options. And he also asked, with the seventh-period day. Could we do seven periods, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday? And on Friday, when you don't pull for FTE, do some sort of. Um, could be like an A B every Friday where you have a longer period of time on Fridays in your classes. For lab or other things. And we said, yes, we will start, we can certainly consider that. If it is meeting the needs of kids. And we are able to strategically schedule, then we're open to that. Um, so this is going to him. Um, the, the biggest change is teachers will be teaching six periods. So right now, our high school teachers are accustomed to teaching five. So that is a change. But I will tell you, it is typical to teach six periods. Um, I had not seen schools that were teachers only taught.
But are they teaching five just one day a week?
Yeah, so. So the way their schedule looks is, is a Monday, Tuesday, Monday, Wednesday. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, they're teaching one, three, five, and seven. So if I have a plan, I'm teaching three periods. If I am a department chair or head, I'm teaching two periods. So now we move to our Tuesdays and Thursdays. So it's two, four, and six. So I have a planning, so I'm teaching two periods. So on Friday, it meets every day. Me, all seven me, so they have two plannings on Friday. So they have one each day and then two on Friday. So they're only teaching five classes. However, you look at over two-day period is five, on Friday is five.
So that's what is current. And so they have in, in their current schedule, they do have ninety minutes of planning every single day. In the options, the upcoming options. They would also have ninety minutes of planning every single day. Um, if we do the four-by-four, the alternating A B, A B. But if we do the this, um, traditional. They would only have forty-five minutes of planning per, but it, and it would be every day.
What's the advantages to as it stands now to having block scheduling that everybody's now? Um, I mean, I'm on my second stuff, working at the high school.
So. So the block schedule allows for flexibility, one, for gain of credits. So in order to gain credit, you have more opportunities to gain the credit. That's why by the time they are. If you have an accelerated student, by the end of your senior year, that second semester, you almost could have three blocks. Because you had the opportunity to gain those credits, those number of credits, especially going back to when it was middle school. Because it, it was a high school course at the middle school. In that same level of flexibility in a block schedule, more opportunities to gain credit. There's also more opportunities to remediate if you already need credit recovery. Meaning I need to take this class again. You have more opportunities to do it because you're, you have the ability to do it. Now, the, a benefit of it as well is in a ninety-minute block, a teacher. Typically, trained well, can go deeper in ninety minutes than you would in forty-five minutes. Because some would feel in forty-five minutes. By the time they, they get in and they sit down, it's time for them to leave out. I have seen and worked with principals in both. In IV. So I, for IV, the block is typically more palatable because you can go deeper longer. Now. If I am a struggling student. If you can't keep my attention for forty-five minutes, you really think your problem is keeping it well for ninety? That's the piece that in a block you have to know as well, which is why I see. The same faces in the hallways at Decatur High School. And I'm chasing them. Same block. I experienced that when I walked the building because there is a less engaged student. In a ninety-minute block. But if it's very much your student who is accelerated, advanced. Things of that nature in a ninety-minute block. A highly skilled teacher can go more breadth and more depth. Now. We did have very robust conversation with Mr. Spool because he came to cabinet yesterday. And we talked about the plan. So in an elementary school, uh, any given teacher has five preps. And they have maybe thirty minutes. To forty-five minutes of that. The plan. For five preps. Most teachers at Decatur High School have two prep minutes. Meaning those two courses that they are prepping for. Now. We do have two former educators at the table. One of which was a high school teacher. That also has understanding of what it means to have multiple preps. And the amount of planning time to do that. So the, those are the things that I want you to know that we have shared. He shared, he said. Oh my goodness, if we take a planning away, it's gonna be a problem. I said, okay, but also if we don't increase compensation. Then a problem. So we are gonna have to find a happy medium. So that's why this will be given to him to garner feedback from both institutions. Because if we're great on their behalf. We are great on the behalf of our students and also with me. What is it that they are seeking as well as our governance and our leadership and guidance for what is next?
That's a good question about just the, the, the kind of days. We said. At least in option one and option two, you're talking about keeping two preps or ninety minutes with the plan, right? In option one, we're talking about increasing win time. And we're asking the teacher to do one more period of instruction. So is it a longer day? Like, where is the time going? How's that?
So if we look at this. In lunch, there is a five-minute transition between each lunch. That's fifteen minutes. So I could take those fifteen minutes and when bell one ends for first lunch to end. Second lunch is coming, but there needs to be staff in the hall, so there's no congregating, everybody goes back. Right now, there's a five-minute lag in between that. And then you can take those five minutes and add it back to win. So I'm not getting any. Time is just coming out of the air, but I'm just cutting down that time for transition.
That, that sorts of win, if I'm adding an instruction period and not removing a.
Because on the old schedule, they were doing win as that block on that odd day. On that even day, that two, four, six, win was in the, the block.
Okay, so moving the win to the Monday, Wednesday, whatever, that's how it's here, okay. So we're actually not adding, uh, an instruction period. We're just moving an instruction period from Monday, Wednesday into Tuesday, Thursday. Loop of the way the state looks at it, then, then we get paid.
It's about like, Dr., what did I say? It's a numbers game. And you have to know how to work the system so that it works for you and not against you.
But I, I just, I just, I, I, I do wanna make sure that I'm a hundred percent clear. In our schedules that we're proposing here. We are actually, let me ignore the last one. We are not taking away planning time from the teachers. We are actually not disrupting all of that much. All we're just saying is teach the class on Tuesday, Thursday, so the state pays us.
But Friday is different. So right now, their Friday is a one through seven, forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
And the other thing, I'll tell you why it's different, is because win time was a class. For ninety minutes, that was a block of time. Many teachers were not, are not actually instructing during win time. It is a come and see me if you need help. Some are, um, running small groups. But for many, that is, could be considered an additional planning time. So what we're saying is, this is going to be now skinnied, small. But we're gonna put an actual course here.
Okay, so that's why, so we are taking away a giant chunk of win, shortening it and putting a course there. That's, that wasn't working.
And then also, you should know that this schedule that Decatur High School has. Was birthed as a result of the pandemic. So your older, your oldest and your children that came out of. They didn't have this schedule because this was how do we recover? Every school in America was trying to figure out, how do we have time to run small groups? How do we have time to pull children and do this? Well, now, just like we saw with that math data K eight. We're at the high school and we're saying we need to. Do something different this school. And when C C R P R comes out, you're going to also understand. Why we have to do it.
Yeah, I, I obviously want to hear what the teachers have to say. Um, I just would be really skeptical about reducing planning time beyond the two.
But she's saying it's typical for teachers to have one planning period.
Yes, one, a one ninety-minute block in a high school, yes.
So they have one ninety-minute every day currently, but with win, as Ms. Burton was saying. That could, they consider that, they don't, they can't physically leave the class, they have students there. But they can sit on their computer and they can plan and they can do things. But they can't physically leave the class during that time because students are there. So they can take that time and prep, write notes on the board, do whatever they need to do during that win time. Because it's not an instructional period, but they do have to have students. And so now they'll be instructing during that period instead of.
I wanna personalize this. So I'm Mr. Harden. I teach three segments of ninth grade literature and two of. AP line right now. Um, can we go back to schedule? I wanna see like what my day looks like now versus the options that you've already proposed, so.
If you are teaching your three sections of ninth grade lit to AP line. You, let's say you have those all on your odd days, your, um, AP line. So your, me, AP line is gonna be on even day. So your ninth grade lit is gonna be one, third is gonna be your planning. Five and seven, ninth grade lit. Now, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, you're gonna have AP, planning, AP. You also have advisement and win on Thursday. And over here, you're gonna have AP, planning, AP, and win.
So what's the new version?
So the new version is. You now have six, so you have three nine and three AP. So on A day, you have one A is ninth grade, two A is planning, three A is ninth grade, four A is ninth grade. Now, on B day, you have planning first period, second period AP, third period AP, fourth period AP.
So is my class size still there?
Your class size is at twenty-three. I based this at twenty-three kids, so your class size did not go up. Because you're not able to teach an additional section, so you don't have to get more kids in your class.
So in theory, if that schedule you described is for all students, we have, we now have. The number of English teachers. We have a lot more English classes being taught to cover what we needed.
Because we only teach in five sections. So now we're at an additional section. We don't need as many English teachers.
Well, but I'm not going to. No, that's not going to happen. So we're, we're not going to do a reduction in course. What we would need to do is to actually let the course request process. Guide what is going to happen for the students. Not the needs for the staff. So what has traditionally happened is this was the staff. And we fit the children into what the staff is. But we're going to actually start with what the students need. And then create the master basis on the student need and request versus the other way around. That is a shift. Because the course request process. Requires intense amount of counseling support. And it goes back even as early as the middle school. So.
Um, okay, so we've got another FTE coming up in March, so we know that there are some things that we need to do. Um, we've gotta make sure that we have no students with the O segments. That's where we lose money. And then, um, we have some classes that have three, six, A students. Those classes, they have to be collapsed. Um, so those students need to go into the other math classes. Um, and we're, we're working on that. We're gonna start preparing for our master schedule for next year. So one principal school is going to get feedback first. Um, we are going to start our course request process that begins in January. And we're doing a course request process for the middle school as well, which will be new this year. Um, because we're adding the honors, so it makes sense. Um, we'll enter our course requests, um, for the middle and high school. And then as we're going through next semester, we're gonna have monthly check-ins. To see where we are with scheduling. So are twenty-five percent of your kids scheduled? Let's do a check-in. Fifty percent, seventy-five percent. So then by April, we can ensure that we are scheduled. And May is when you go back and you look for those holes and, and missing pieces and make sure that we have it right. And then, of course, after summer school, we may have to make some adjustments. Um, but we've got a really clear month-by-month process that we've got to follow, um, to see. Where our requests land us. And then how do we need to be strategic if we have many requests, a certain course, and make changes? But we have time to do that starting early.
I could just wanna emphasize that I think if there's any one consistent thing I've heard from teachers, it's just more planning would be helpful. And so we are, I know that it's not officially removing planning, we're talking about shrinking win, but it's gonna feel like we're removing planning. Right? Well, I mean, so like, we should just acknowledge that that is exactly how it's been feeling. Um, what compensatory? Things will be able to do, like to the extent that I think we all agree planning and training is helpful for teachers. How do we mitigate the impact of that time coming away? And so that the teachers feel supported as opposed to penalized in this methodology?
I think. The calendar is still up and out for review. I mean, it's not an out for review, it's not an update. So I think that's how you have to paint, paint the picture bigger than what is happening specifically. In your planning, but what your overall release times look. So. For example. Your K three teachers are going to have significant amount of professional learning they're going to need. For the science of next year.
Yeah.
And I'm telling you that the fill course. So we have to. Come up with a way for those teachers to have the least time to do that work. We're going to have to do the exact same methodology or something similar to think through this. So it's not to say that this is. We know which one we're going with, we don't. But I want you to know that you're, you have to make a change. Because you have one on Tuesday and a Thursday classes that aren't funded at the state. Yeah, I mean, that, that right now.
Yeah.
And, and I wonder, my other question, if you've mentioned some of the math classes that people ask. I wonder if you, if you've got some careful thought into what we would do about maybe some of those more specialized classes that. Or have a lot of force of awareness when to get with the, get into the like. The IV math class, the AP stats, they start to get smaller and smaller because of the requirements getting more rigorous and then. You know, how do we handle that? Or like we talked about earlier, um, a couple of months ago about some classes offering to ones. Great to call it as a curriculum, um. Their slack of black history, which is notoriously, uh, smaller class because it's, it's just getting on the speed. But they're offering them history class. And you know, the first year or two of those classes get going before they gain some popularity or the teachers, you know, you find a teacher that's really good fit. It may be a smaller class, so I mean.
They exist. In that seventy-four, some of those seventy-four are truly valid. Like if I'm in a Georgia Tech dual enrollment, you know, very high-level engineering class. Well, it might be. If that is me, I'm going to meet your needs. But remember, we said we're basing this on student needs first.
Yeah.
That's the philosophy difference. It's not that I'm not going to meet their needs. I'm going to meet their needs. It's just that I'm not going to meet their, not meet their needs. And we're still losing. It becomes a both and if you know. How to play the game. And that's the piece. You have to make some tweaks. So yeah, some of that seventy-four, like you said, first period and seventh period, we expect it. Because our students, some of our students are in dual enrollment in various campuses all throughout metro Atlanta. That's fine. But that should not be the majority. That should be the exception. And you go through that through the master schedule. Course request process.
And I just would, I just wanna add on the win time with the ninety-minute block. So that's a ninety-minute block currently, where many of our students are not receiving instruction every other day. So while I hear the, the teachers kind of the, the missed opportunity for planning. I also am thinking about what's happening for the students for ninety minutes every other day. And if they're receiving instruction. Um, so that's just something to balance and be thinking.
I'm sure, but we could just hire a bunch of teachers, right? Like, I mean, I'm not trying to suggest anybody blow the budget up to do that, but I am saying that there are other solutions.
But if we look at the win time that she spoke about, I did a period analysis as well. So in the period analysis, we have eighteen hundred and forty-three kids enrolled. During win time, we only have eighteen hundred and one. Though some of those kids are in their IB, so that still means we have forty-two kids. That don't have anything going on during win period. So where are they when they go?
Oh, I know, we got from, um, Dr. Whitaker, uh, when she shared this, uh, gave me a preview of this term, my one-on-one. I know we're gonna go with the, um, compensation, uh, stuff. Cause my first thought, well, I said the same thing, like, you know, teachers never have enough planning time. Um, and, and you know, there's always, seems like every year as we are. Looking at processes and finding the stuff, there's always something new that they need to learn, which requires a lot of time. Um, but they definitely, um, I think deserve more compensation too. And so if we are, so the what kind of helps me, and I know we're gonna talk about this shortly, but. The possibility of, you know, not using this. Um, recovering this money or not leaving this money on the table so that potentially it could result to increase. Conversation might help this more digestible, make this more digestible for teachers.
And then that, so that gets to my, that my question is, the numbers that we put up here today are overestimates of how much we'll get out of this. We're not gonna get to pull it down out of this because we, we're not gonna get rid of all seventy-four. Classes. We already said that the two bookends, we are, so it's really the thirty classes in the middle. And there's some amount of the thirty classes in the middle that are dual enrollment and engineer, right?
But I would say, I would bet just. Because I think it's underestimating because no one in Decatur makes thirty-nine thousand dollars. That's what everybody's.
So, so we are gonna be able to get rid of the seventy-four.
So there's, those are no, none of those are dual enrollment courses that were in that seventy-four. So dual enrollment is funded. I don't care if it's one child in it, two children in it, because they're paid through the state. Uh, for George University system, university system, George, I'm sorry. So those courses are paid through dual enrollment.
So let me, let me, let me ask the question more precisely. We don't yet know how many of those we're gonna take down from the seventy-four. And we don't know what we're actually paying in supportive salaries for the people that are in. And so Jane's question and my question, which is, how much of this money are we gonna recover? So that we can put it towards teacher salary to make it palatable, we actually don't yet know. And so when will we know?
So I would say, once we know. Which option we're going to go with. Build the schedule. At least probably by March, when we're ready to run FTE again. And do a comparison on what we're building versus what currently exists, and you can see the gap.
And in budget timeline, by March, we will already have to be making an estimate of salary adjustment.
You'll see that in budget, yeah.
So.
But you're variance, you're gonna have to find, you know, it will be less. So part of it will need to come from other places, but you know, at a minimum. You're always that.
Yeah, I, I got it.
All right.
Yeah, I know. Good afternoon. They have primed the pump for me. So as you can see in front of you, you have your binders. And so I, my uh job this afternoon is to just walk you through the the salary first look of our compensation study. So we partnered with our compensation consultants, MMG Consultants. Um, over the last few months and during this compensation study. They looked at our existing salary schedules, our skills, our pay rates. Our initial uh salary determinations at the time of hire. Um, the application of how we um give pay increases and our cost of living adjustments and how we do that on an annual basis. And then other documentation of salary processes and practices as well as job descriptions. And so in doing that, we've made sure that we came up and derived at a compensation philosophy in going through this process. And so we made sure that the compensation model must, and these are must haves, to add value. Um, to our recruitment and retention tool is to include salary and benefits. And for us as CSD, that would be our health benefits, our TRS uh employee contribution. And uh our BICA, which is paying into social security. Um, to ensure competitively positioned salaries for critical and high needs positions. To be transparent and easily communicated. Kind of say that again, transparent and easily communicated. Um, establish and maintain internal equity, consistency and fairness. And most of all, affordable and sustainable over time. And so in coming up with that philosophy, I wanted to make sure that it all tied in to one of our uh strategic accelerators, which is one of my favorites. Uh, cultivating and retaining high quality professionals. And in that goal, it is to propose a competitive compensation package for all personnel. To support the recruitment and retention of quality employees based on market conditions. Within board established budget limitations. So as Francis over there saying, I think he's ready to open his his first. Alrighty, so here we need to see where we stand. What what, how do we rank with everyone around us and comparable to our size? So here's a, here's the uh districts that we did look at for um our comparison. Cobb County, DeKalb County, Fulton County Schools, Marietta City, which is more comparable to our enrollment. And inside um of employees, number of employees. Winnet County, Atlanta Public Schools, Clayton County, and Rockdale. So as you can see, we're ranking pretty low. Um, but our goal, by the conclusion of the All Indicators Strategic Plan FY twenty eight. CSD teacher salaries will be at the top quartile of. Uh, Metro Atlanta districts. So I think we can say, yes, we can do this, right? We can really do this. Alright, as we were looking at the um, as the consultants, I'm sorry, looking through our information. Their observations were that our annual rates for teachers are definitely lower than other districts. Um, our current salary schedules, they don't have a set amount between the steps. So it is is all over the place. We don't really know the structure of why those steps um are incorporated the way they they are. Um, there was a significant increase by step at step twelve um for all degree levels. There's really no explanation at that as well. And then beyond step twenty seven, there was only an increase every other year. So considerations that they were asking us to um look at is making sure that our teacher schedule. Um, combines the state and local um amounts into one uh amount, which is we do that currently, but not all districts do that. Um, adopt a strategic position to sustain market placement and create structured uniformity for all of our teacher schedules.
What's that mean?
Basically, just like I was saying, making sure each step has a uh amount and really makes sense. Cause right now, like I said, it's it's varied amounts between our our steps. Um, elimination of marginal and insignificant longevity increases between uh steps, which is like I said, beyond twenty seven. Every other year, you are getting that in increase, not every year. Um, sustaining the market um sustained market favorable and competitive teaching salaries. And then making sure that we are uh granting experience based on the state of Georgia guidelines.
So I I don't know if this should be a policy or not, but if it occurs to me, we should reset some sort of. Schedule where we constantly come back and take a look at that. I mean, it's a lot of what you're describing right here is, in in my experience, fairly typical. Drift over time in in compensation structure and charts for large organizations. And the only solution so far as I know is to like have it every three year revisit, five year revisit or shit. Do we build that into it? Like I like a, we go back and we literally look at every step and benchmark every next.
I think that that would be a very sound practice. Typically, when you're going to bring forth a salary recommendation, you need to do a benchmark analysis in metro district. Every time, but to really make sure that that drift did not happen, to codify it in policy. Is something we can definitely look at actually. And we're working on policies for. Uh, personnel.
I mean, I I obviously, we don't wanna get super into your business. But I mean, whatever we can do from a policy level to give you the ability to do it on a recurrent basis.
I think that that would help. Because when you see these. Different, when you see what we currently have. You you can see we're in between the salary schedules. You're, I'm wondering how do we get to the steps and the ways that we. So we definitely.
That's actually, you can go back and look at it there for years where there were two thousand dollar increases. By the state that we mandated, and then there would be a one percent and then a three percent. And so over the year, that just. I mean, that's super typical.
And what we talked about, and I've seen districts also, when the state. Or the governor gives said ratings for said bonus to a specific group. How does the district then compensate everyone else? So that said group does not feel um that they have been left out. And so they've gone into bond balance to do that, they may adjusted the entire schedule, they changed the percentage on everyone. All of those are the ways that districts have gotten to where you are. That you didn't have to recount probably.
I think on this point, that probably is worth it to just say, you know, every spring or every other spring, no matter whether the people look. See, you know, we're not at the, you know, our old, old state, fifty different better, basically, these schools, schools system. So whenever you're feeling adjusted, they're looking there for, you know, I think also like Jamie said, there was some confidence, but. Bonus is in there, or we just look coal is in there. Um, or we were sometimes we're just looking at base hours and talk about this, just base hours or base plus benefits. And I think that needs to be organized and structured into a policy as well as time schedule, and maybe there won't be, won't be like. Sicker shock by this dread here, because there's, you know, there's inflation and then if we don't keep up with it, then we.
Inflation and coal, especially in twenty twenty three. Where we are right now doesn't compare to two years ago. And then I will, I know for certain what districts did with monies that were one time. Monies from the federal government looked drastically different. Depending upon access to the amount of money they had. And some of them really did heavily put things into um what would be their salary status.
So I I do, I do think that should be, the more I think about it, some kind of annual review and adjustment. Is it's it's both, I think, beneficial to help keep us from, you know, the drip. But it also provides us in a, like, when money show up arbitrarily from the state. Or when, rather than feel pressure to kind of like last minute throw around and try to figure out what we need to get levers on for everybody. We can say, no, no, we have a process, we're gonna be looking into that, that information is gonna get incorporated into the process. And, you know, something will come out of it. I just rather than, I feel like there's been a lot of times where we put it sort of on a last minute, all this came in from the state and unexpected, so what are we adding for everybody else?
And and part of that, I'm one of the ants, it was very, some believe it was. For the DOE to come out and say, here is what we are considering the three thousand dollars ahead of what the governor said. Or what the governor has communicated, that's the first time that the DOE came out of the gate before the governor. But you're in a different climate right now. In terms of who's outlawing versus. All of that makes it.
So as you can see, this is the teacher ranking, this is on page twelve in your packet. This is for salaries only, and it's hard to see, so that's why I wanted to make sure it was in your packet. But for entry level rankings for zero years of experience. We are ranking eight out of nine of all the districts that we previously spent about um for all degree levels. When we look at middle of the road, around twelve years, incredible years of experience. Um, for our bachelor, bachelor and and master degree level on teachers, we are eight out of nine. And seven out of nine were specialists in doctorate degrees. And then top of the scale, more than twenty five years of credible years, we are nine. That's on page twelve. Okay. Alright, this is what we really wanted here, okay? Alright, so these are the options that our consultant gave us to consider. As we're uh literally going through this process of compensation reform. So the option one is really no cost, is is minimal change to our current schedule. Is basically eliminating those double um uh years at the at the end of of everyone getting a uh increase every single year. So that is that no cost, that's just restructuring the schedule just a little bit, okay? Option two, it it still has the varied amounts between the steps. But it increases our entry level amount to fifty three thousand. Currently, we're at fifty five nine seven, I think. Um, round off my head. And so that is an increase of two thousand fifty three dollars. So if you look on page thirty one, that shows that we are increasing our rankings. If we start our entry level and begin that at fifty three thousand. Okay, so we are like a little engine that could recount an engine of those rankings. Um, for option three, it is still incorporating the increase to fifty three thousand. But it's giving the the um steps more uniform amounts in between the steps. So it's really doing what we want to do is really get a structure behind our pay pay schedules. And being able going forward, if we are given increases, have a better hold on how we're gonna give that amount. And we'll know exactly where that's pushing our schedules. Okay, for option four, it is keeping our entry level at fifty thousand. But again, giving a more structured um look to our schedules. And you can see the increases are a little bit more only because the entry level is less. So that's just kind of giving us a little bit of a a boost right there as well. Now, when we go into option five and six, of course, that is more high cost and more um aggressive. This is putting in, giving our entry level amount to fifty five two hundred. And I believe that is on page forty something, I think. So you guys can see forty nine, page forty nine. You can see how much it it increases our rankings if we go up to fifty five thousand. Um, and then keeping the uniformity in between our steps. And that gives the all the degree levels as well of where we will start out. And then option six, that is revering back to the varied amounts between the steps. But it still increases our entry level to fifty five two. So let that kind of soak in and kind of just kind of digest that a little bit. This is, like I said, salary only teachers.
I'd be interested in knowing, what would it take? For us to be in the number one or number two position, which is your top quartile. Number one or number two position, when you look at both salary and comp and bonus benefits. When you look at total comp, what is the dollar amount in salary adjustments? For total comp, to put us in the number one or number two position? Because I think it's more than option six. I suspect it's probably more like two and a half to three.
Right.
But I'd like to know what that is.
And that is part of our next steps. Um, but yes, we just want to make sure that this is just salary only for us to look at, but yes, that is definitely. Now, when you're looking at at uh state health, that is pretty much standard across the board. But like you said, paying into social security and all that in our TRS employer portion, yes, we can get that, we're gonna get that for it. And that's part of our.
Appreciate from being separate, but it does need to be discussed, like, social security is close to the difference, some of these schools. I also want to say that six maybe, absent talking about what the five year plan is, even six isn't good enough.
So I would like to see us get.
Like six.
About Marion City, I mean, that's. If that's, if that's to be near inside. And then they, and it's Cobb County, which the cost of living is lower than it is here. Then what would it, if we use Mary, Marion City as our benchmark, what would that number? So and the whole question to that is, I mean, we we often compare ourselves to Marion City, but, you know, because that's the size. But we also lose teachers to be cap. Those surrounding districts because they're closer, because of commute, because gas is X number of dollars per gallon, so I mean, I mean, that's. You know, reasonable, but you know, if you look at Fulton, I'm gonna do that, it's also reasonable that people salary.
So one of the things that uh Dina will show in the last slide. Is when people see what would be the benefits cost. Both together and what those rankings then look like. What I I painfully share. What the high school is costing and we're losing in funding? Because you need to see these numbers on just that alone. And we, we, we need to be thoughtful. And lay all of the amounts on the table so that we can then make the best decision. Because even in what we saw, those that that they salary in the thirties. So, okay, so now we're gonna move to non-teacher, which is even a little more interesting.
Exactly, and so if you look in your, the uh vanilla folder. That is giving me the same ranking that we have because we wanted to look at our um leadership team in 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 the district. As far as executive cabinet, our principals, our assistant principals, um and anyone that was on that administrative scale. Now, going through coordinators and all that, it kind of varies from district to district, so that was kind of hard to rank. But we wanted to at least give you an idea of what our uh leadership team would be compared to other districts. So we want to look at associate superintendent, assistant superintendent and a chief. Like I said, that would be our executive cabinet, we are nine out of nine. I mean, eight out of nine for our assistant and associate superintendents and nine out of nine of chief executives. For other districts, and then for our principals, for all levels, we were nine out of nine.
Yes, so uh in talking with you all individually, you asked, where did we rank? Pretty much, you could have just changed the the same.
Again, I I I do, in in order to. Again, I I I do, i- i- in order to make decisions about these numbers, we need to see it with them. Um, I'd also like to understand, so your, you know, your teacher and student formulas are pretty. Right, what is our administrator to student formulas? And what is our administrative overhead compared to these other districts as well?
Exactly.
Are you guys doing twice the work of anyone else? That's the, that's the next question.
That is part of the variance, I mean, right now, we're looking at size of district, complexity of the district. Size of the school, yeah, so all of that is varied. And that's why it was kind of hard to to rank a lot of the other administrative positions on there, because it does vary from district to district. Um, but those are different variances that we are taking in consideration. And then as we know, our superintendent, she is the highest paid of our district, so we don't want to collapse, you know, too much into her as well, so we really look at all of that.
Well, and it's also, I mean, particularly when you start talking about super. You're, you're looking at comparative size and values, right, like, like, when that is gonna pay different. But for some of the rest of administrative overhead. Uh, there's already sensitivity and need to be about for the cost of administrative overhead, pay or justify it. Uh, we need to show that we've looked at that, and that we have an answer for what our efficiency looks like here as well.
Alrighty, so the observations, just really quickly, of course, we are hit a little bit lower than than all of the other districts. But with our bus drivers, our bus monitors, and early childhood physicians, those are competitive to other districts. Um, really looking at the considerations for our non-teacher uh scale. We, right now, we have about six different schedules that we currently have. Their considerations were saying, put it all on one and have it classified in administrative scale. Um, establish uniform numbers of steps, some of our uh job classification, job categories have different varying steps at the top of the top of the scale. Um, expand the administrative uh salary scale to twenty, currently, we only have fifteen steps um on the administrative scale. Um, incorporate a standard percentage increase between steps. Um, collapse insignificance, uh pay differences between grades, adjust salaries to ensure market competitiveness. And create a minimum of thirteen fifty per hour for all positions. Right now, we do have some positions that are around twelve. So we wanna make sure that we are having livable wages and in, you know, inflation as well. Just trying to get to that livable wage.
How about generally fifteen is considered? Okay, we talked about with that.
And increasing that as well, okay, alright.
The fiscal impact is.
But that's a, it's an important point, if we're gonna talk livable wage, let's use. Right, I haven't just known what that movie is, and maybe it takes us a year or two to get there, but, but we should have that as a talk.
And that also helps us when we're talking to the, to the community as well. We may have to say, we looked at thirteen, we looked at fourteen, we hit the fifteen, we looked at a lot fifteen at first. So usually you can tell them that we looked at it.
Or we can say fifteen to get from thirteen to fifteen is.
But like you said, we have to put all of those options out there and what they, what they thought.
I just, I'm just total transparency to make everyone. We rolled the village right back, though it still increases taxes, we should be very clear about that, that is what we did. Just, we're not misleading anyone, we're gonna be clear about that.
Alright, so for the, the non-teacher uh options, the summary of options for number one, and this be, this would be true for all the options. They started off uh increasing all salaries of schedules five percent. Okay, so that would be standard for all the options. Um, and then option one will incorporate a two point two five increase for each step in in the classify of non-teacher salary sched- schedules. And then a one point seven five between steps for the administrative uh salary scale. This would also expand all uh positions to twenty three steps. And then add the assistant and deputy superintendent positions to the salary schedule that would incorporate the supplement that they receive at this point, so he'll make sure that all positions are on a salary schedule. Okay, for option one A, um, this is expanding the administrative scale to twenty steps. And still keep, and still keeping the um one point five increase between the steps, okay? Option two is incorporating a two percent increase for the administrative scale. And keeping um expanding all the positions, uh twenty three steps. And then two A is incorporating the two percentage. The two point five for every other position and expanding the administrative schedule to twenty steps. So those are the options that they have given us to consider for our non-teacher. Alrighty, so these are our next steps. So we know that that is definitely the, the uh point that we need to make sure that we have the benefits. Including uh with the salary to make sure that we have an aggregate um compensation total, and you will receive that in January. Um, our next step will be adjust the ranking for aggregate compensation also in January. Um, we will assist affordability and sustainability of all options and considerations. So that will make sure that we will look at everything you guys have uh spoke about today, so we can make sure that we are giving you everything to consider. And going forward to our recommendations, and hopefully we will have that by February. And then we will make sure that we will look at the financial impact. So we can make sure that, again, it is sustainable and affordable going forward throughout the whole uh strategic. Alrighty, that is it, do you have any more questions?
Have we ever looked at or talked about taking out the one benefit that we do pay for and the others don't pay for?
Social Security?
Social Security?
And it would be, be able to take that to the salaries versus social security.
Exactly, that is one of the um things that we at this point cannot change. Once the district has opted into the social security, we cannot change it. Um, and that was one of the things, so that, I think you all asked about that back in twenty twenty one, we did conversation study then. We researched and that is something that you can't change. Let me be honest with you, with the state of social security, I don't think they want big employers pulling out anyway. Um, so that is, that's an option that we can't do. Um, and then we're looking at even the contributions that you guys give as a board to um health insurance. And so that is something that not all districts do that, but sometimes they, they um they offer life insurance, that base life insurance, and I think that's obviously something that we could do as well, even, not even increasing that seventy eight twenty six.
So, but like, when we start to really, when we start to, can you go back to this slide? So when you start to, like, for seven three, give us the, all the options and how much they cost. Are you going to break, break it down by exactly what the salary is and the benefits separately, because I feel like it's got a little muddy in the past, by us saying this is how much teachers are getting by lumping those together, because I feel like what what folks are interested in seeing is how much teachers are getting in their paycheck every week. And while we are paying into it, and it is an important cost to us, maybe looking at them separately as two parts of a whole, maybe that will help some of the waters aren't.
So we will, we will do an additional column that says benefits, and then we'll do an additional column that says total. Now, as any employee can base a column that you put in your W two. Whatever you list will impact what your actual take home is. But we can say what the actual salary is. And what the actual benefits are, add them together and leave the salaries and benefits. And it's going to expand basically what you see here to, instead of it being three columns, it'll be five problems, so we're adding two more for all of the boxes, so it'll probably not be on any.
Also give you a mock cut, a total compensation um salary sheet, because that's what the employees receive now. And they see exactly what, you know, their, their annual compensation is and the total package of what the employers.
Yeah, I, I want this to, I want this to be misleading, I mean, like, uh, in a couple of conversations, we've been, we may be presented salary, and then we presented salary and benefits together, and then in the conversation, flip back and forth, and maybe it's, it's been it, it, to, to people listening, maybe it's, it's been confusing, or we're trying to make it seem like instead of giving, or maybe the reason that we fall in on the rankings is because we've got these benefits packages. And some, for to some teachers and to some people, maybe what they're really interested in knowing, his boy shows up and they're chasing every person, the team, and that's what they want to compensate.
With the, the benefit of looking at salary first. And then adding in the, I'm sorry, the benefit. It's because you want to speak to the person that just wants to see, just comes out. And you also want to speak to every person that wants to see total comp. And then you have to take all of that to analyze to make that true, um, basically three, four.
But, yeah, my, my points were, well, I, I, well, I agree with Carmen, I, I would say that there are phases of career where people value things differently. When we're talking about compensation, we should be taking that into account. I thoroughly agree, a four-year bachelor just stepping in, who's thinking of retirement in terms of something that old people do. Um, they're looking at salary, but somebody that's a year away from retirement is not really taking over their, their check. That is hard, right, and so we should be thoughtful of that as we manage.
And I think presenting to all of you what our groups are of employees that we have, how many people are in the first. We'll provide you with that too, I think all of that really does begin to help you get to more of a three, four, or five versus right now, this first, what first pass, seizure we are.
It, it's veiled, it's tough, it's like, it's costing the district eight and a half percent, so that answer, like, for every dollar we increase, like, that's real, that's us trying to plan and all that sort of stuff. It is incredibly difficult to convince someone, like, you teach a decader for thirty years, yes, your paycheck is five hundred dollars a month, less a month. But between the ages of sixty two and a hundred and four thousand, you're gonna make an extra forty five hundred dollars a month to sit around, and that's the you're right, I mean, if I'm fifty, I'm excited about that, over twenty, I don't care. But the, the reality is, we can't back out of that, and we do need to provide teachers who can make that decision and that sort of stuff. One, one, it's not to say we don't need to increase salary, we do, but we also just need to be real, we can't get out of. Get out of their contract, and I've heard people say, like, well, we're paying teachers five hundred dollars less a month or whatever, it's like, no, actually, we're not. And, and the truth is, when we raise taxes on people to pay for it, part of it is we pay an assist you're liking to.
And, and I think the communication piece is key. So whenever you're talking about compensation strategy, and just having sessions in general. You have to have a strong communication strategy, you gotta get the, what's in it. So, um, you know, McCall is here, she had a lot to say during the part of our. Just because it's about a lot of things for us is the way things are communicated and exploring.
Yeah, I would love to, I'm looking at the teacher salary page, I would love to see us in the first or second page with a yellow line across it based on total comp. And then know what we need to do on, because you can't really change that, know what we need to do on salary. Based on what you've shown here, it's we're, we're, it's five million dollars, that's the voting roughly, and we're looking forward to do everything that we're talking about, doing all of that. Five million dollars is the voting, right? Another way of thinking about it is it's, it's roughly two and a half mils, about a two and a half mil change that we're talking about. That's if we don't take any other sustainable long-term costs out. Another way to look at it is, it's a five percent change on the budget, we have changed this budget five percent every year. So we are not, I know five million is a big number, but it's actually not that big, right? Like, we have impacted this in many ways, this already, I mean, the budget has grown by thirty million dollars.
Yes, there's money to be found places, we found it maybe. There's money to be found, so maybe while you're talking about how much you need to grow it, maybe we can we don't have to grow it by that much, and we're just gonna make that happen.
We, we wanna, we wanna, well, I mean, I think there's five million dollars to take out of it. Well, I think there's a combination of revenue optimization and savings that could get us to the five million dollars, that would fund precisely, that's how I think that is.